April 27, 2023, regular meetings and April 14, 2023. Please stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Russia, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in its scope.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Quetzal Gibson?
Yes.
Quetzal Gibson, ready to call it?
Here.
Commissioner Eats here?
Here.
Mr. Janer Exson? Commissioner McRoom?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? Exson? Commissioner Todd?
Here.
I have notified that Commissioner Janer would like to participate remotely due to out-of-town business.
Move to allow remote meeting participation of Health Commissioner Janer. Does allow per Section 7 of the Open Meetings Act.
Sorry. On paper? I have. Would you three have the management's color?
We do not.
Do you mind reading the consent?
And 3.1, approved March 2023, think that this versus the amount of $2,181,000 to 70 cents. 3.2, approved April 13, 2023, regularly minutes. 3.3, approved April 13, 2023, executive closed session meeting minutes. And 3.4, through Resolution 23-03, naming the golf practice facility at Maple Grove. I'm sorry, Maple Grove Golf. Maple Grove Golf Course and retard rest.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda except for consideration?
Move to accept consent agenda items 3.1 to 3.4.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Quetzal Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? I'm sorry, Commissioner Todd?
Yes.
Commissioner Eats here?
Yes.
Commissioner Janer?
Yeah.
Commissioner McRoom?
Yes.
Commissioner Todd, oh, uh, Quetzal Gibson?
Yeah.
Move to approve consent agenda items 3.1 to 3.4.
Okay. On paper?
I have.
New business, decennial committee register.
Yes, just a quick update for the board this evening. The HECO 21st Weekly Packet included materials associated with the formation of a decennial committee. In June of 2022, Governor Chris were assigned to law Decennial Committee on Local Government Deficiency Act. The law requires that certain Illinois public bodies, including the Park District, convene a committee to study and report on local government deficiency. The committee must include the elected members of the Park District Board, these two residents of the Park District that are approved by the Board, and the Executive Director. Staff is currently in the process of identifying resident representatives who will be recommended to the Board to serve upon the committee. The committee is required to meet at least three times and provide a written report to the Administrative Office of the County Board of Hope, DuPage, and Mill County since they are both Park Districts and both counties. No later than eighteen months after the committee formation. In May, staff intends to present a resolution to the Board for the formation of a committee. The resolutions will utilize a template that was issued by the Illinois Association of Park Districts.
How are the being found or suggested?
So we are actually going back to last year to do a strategic plan process. We had residents who reached out to the Park District and participated in our public group sessions who were expressing interest in the public group sessions. Some of those residents expressed interest in being involved with the Park District in the future if there were other opportunities. So we're in the process now of reaching out to those individuals to explore that possibility to have them on as part of the committee.
Yes, I have EKA Government Sales Registration.
Thank you. Staff is seeking approval to register with EKA Government Sales. A memo detailing this proposal was included in your April 21st Weekly Packet. Approval for registering will be presented to the Board for your consideration at meeting May. EKA is an intergovernmental offering of purchasing penalty that is used by the U.S. General Services Administration, another units of government for bidding and purchasing. By registering with EKA, the district will have access to contract prices secured by EKA for all its government clients. Most immediately registering will provide the district with opportunities to purchase golf and park equipment at pre-negotiated competitive prices through a process that satisfies the requirements of the park board. Staff is expecting this agreement will help with the continued difficulty in obtaining equipment in this, in a reasonable timeframe. Staff will also provide to the Board an update of all current cooperative agreements currently used by the district for purchasing in the November 3 review.
Questions? Golf for purchase?
Yes, staff is requesting approval for the purchase of a 2023 Smithgoes Spray Sour 2000 Sprayer for golf course maintenance used at Springburg and Maple Grove Golf Courses. A memo detailing this purchase was included in your April 21st Weekly Packet. Approval for the purchase will be presented to the Board for their consideration at meeting May. This Smithgoes sprayer staff is seeking to purchase will replace a 16-year-old 2007 four-millimeter sprayer. Having an accurate, reliable sprayer is extremely important for quality of course conditions in turf. Land protectants we use are expensive and inaccurate or ill-timed applications due to equipment malfunction often require follow-up applications and delays completing turf damage and decline. The Smithgoes Spray Sour 2000 Sprayer Golf is seeking the purchase at a total purchase price of $73,762.39. Purchase would be used, would be made using the AF, NAF contract, which is provided through the EKA Government Sales contract. This purchase is part of our 2023 golf capital budget, which includes $717,375 for golf capital purchases.
Professional domain services for golf courses and wash pads?
Yes, staff is seeking to procure professional engineering services for the development of equipment wash pads at the maintenance buildings at Maple Grove and Springburg Golf Courses. A memo detailing the services, these services were provided to the Board in your April 21st Weekly Packet. And a contract for professional design services for the equipment wash pads will be presented to the Board at approval, for their approval at meeting May. Staff recommends entering into a contract with WT Group in order to proceed with the design recommendations for equipment wash pads at maintenance buildings at Maple Grove and Springburg. WT Group has previously provided engineering services as a subcontract for construction of the central maintenance facility and the renovation to the north maintenance facility. They are currently under contract to provide engineering services for improvements to the Alfred Reuben Riverwalk Community Center. And based on this continued satisfactory relationship, staff is recommending awarding a professional service contract for this project to WT Group. WT Group has provided a proposed fee for their present services totaling $44,450. Purpose of the proposed wash pads is to improve our environmental practices in each facility through addressing rids water from daily equipment cleaning that is released into the soil and waterways on the golf courses. Currently, our Parks Department has central and south maintenance facilities with wash bays that were constructed at the time the buildings were being developed to provide an area where equipment is cleaned. Parks wash bays have a drain system that filters out solid material before the wastewater is released into the sanitary sewer. At the golf courses, the maintenance facilities were constructed in the late 80s without wash bays, and both sites do not have sanitary sewers. They're on seeping systems. The rids water from the daily equipment clean surface drains in areas around the maintenance shop or flows into storm sewers. Staff, in an effort to be a leader in environmental stewardship, is proposing to contract with WT Group to investigate options to improve this issue and to reduce the amount of rids water being created from the facilities. Working with WT Group, staff will provide recommendations to the Board for possible solutions using filtration systems or improvements to the wastewater drainage with the goal of improving overall market practices. A total of $400,000 is allocated in our 2023 golf capital budget for the development of equipment wash pads at our maintenance buildings.
Any more questions? I have a couple of questions. What's the difference between, is there a difference between wash bays we currently have at the parks and the wash pads we're talking about?
To be determined. We're going to ask WT Group to kind of come up with some options for us to look at. So there's a closed system, which we were talking about. And there's also a system similar to what we have at our Parks Maintenance Buildings, which is a system that will filter out the solids, hold the solids in place, and then the wastewater runs out into the sanitary sewers.
And the $44,000 for the contractual services that we're talking about now, is that included in the $400,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Is this something that the Park District Green Team has identified wastewater going off and these things as being an issue?
I don't believe that it's been specifically discussed by the Green Team. However, it does fall in line with our various environmental initiatives as far as we can raise other environmental policy to improve water quality and so on in the parks. But I don't know if this specific project has been discussed by the Green Team.
It's been a regular practice in the Parks Department's self-maintenance facilities that they, you know, wash the equipment after they've done whatever they need to do with it. And I think the golf has had as much, you know, interaction with the environment as Parks does, only they don't have the ability to clean their equipment as thoroughly as to do with the, in parks. So for them to be able to wash this, I think makes a whole lot of sense.
Sure.
Bring my line with, really, our local parks. And it's better for the environment.
Yeah, this is something that has been identified for a number of years at the golf courses and through deferrals in our capital and other issues. We've had to push this back and back. Now we have an opportunity to go forward and try to rectify the situation. So we're going to try to identify some means to do that.
And I know I asked this, but are these standard at golf courses in the area?
There are several golf courses in the area, several private clubs that do use these systems. We've contacted a couple of them to kind of get some feedback on how it's being used and how it's improved their overall system. So we'll get some more information from them and try to get a good feel of how exactly it's worked.
I mean, I think the environmental stewardship is obviously really important and worth investments. I just want to make sure we're, you know, there's always opportunity costs that we're putting the money towards the best environmental investment. I know every year I ask about electric golf carts. And it's always, you know, cost-reavival. And I genuinely don't know, is the environmental impact of something like this greater or less than, say, electric golf carts or a million other things we can be doing to protect the environment? I'm not a sustainability expert and wonder if, if we have consulted, it's worth talking to people in the community who are environmental experts and to make sure we're putting the resources at the best for environmental sustainability. Because again, it's not that I don't think the environmental sustainability is important, the water waste is really important. Just want to make sure. Now, if it's important, $1,000, it could be less.
My only comment on this in my last meeting is, the $400,000 sounds shocking. Sounds very big numbers, so everything President Gibson's saying, if there's more due diligence needs to be done. And I guess I totally understand what a wash pad is. So maybe that's why it seems shocking. And we're looking at it right now as the intentionary for these. So once we have a better idea exactly what we're going to be looking at, it's never going to bring that information back to the Board to kind of describe that before, before we obviously proceed construction or bidding into this project.
But it's also $44,000 for the, for that, for that year's side.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question, early weekend comment. It might be helpful to further explain to us what the process looks like now, really others of reasons why, you said it's been years and you've mentioned rectify the situation. Like, maybe explain to us better why you've been wanting to do this for so long? What constraints the current process has, just so we can understand better of why this huge upgrade needs to happen?
Sure. Over the years, staff has noted this situation and tried, through various means, to try to rectify it through low-cost methods. We've installed filters and like screens to try to pull the material off before it flows off our site. It's a short-term fix for a long-term problem. It was created quite a bit of staff time, and it wasn't really fixing the situation. So there's, both sites have no actual drainage off their facility. All the water that comes off the, the actual asphalt from the parking lot, from the maintenance lot, washes off into the soils surrounding those sites. Eventually, that's going to work its way through the rest of the environmental course. We're just trying to come up with a plan to intercept that before that happens.
And how often would you say you're washing the fleet, like the fleet of golf carts?
Daily. And this is not the golf carts. This is mainly the equipment that you can maintain the golf course. As long as it goes out, equipment like that.
Each time the ball is used, it needs to be washed.
Correct.
But would these wash pads save staff time?
No, there's really not going to be a huge ROI for these. You're not going to see staff time reduced. You're not going to see a cost of saving in water. It's just we're looking at the environmental crisis and we want to try to not re-improve those.
Really important.
Commissioner Janer? Any questions? Next, we have professional engineering services. Oh, no, sorry. Or is it second?
Good evening. At the upcoming May 11th meeting of the Board, we intend to present a declaration of surplus property improvements for consideration as permitted by the Illinois Park District Code. Items to golf, IT, and park place are identified as no longer needed or useful for park district purposes. A detailed list was provided in the April 21st Weekly Packet. And these items will be sold on the golf deals website, recycled, traded in, or discarded. Questions?
248 Avenue.
Good evening. As identified at the April 13, 2023, within the Weekly Packet memo, the city of Naperville is proceeding with the 248 Avenue Improvements Project. As part of the project, 248 Avenue will be widened to a five-way cross-section with a land state beating. The Tallgrass Greenway Trail crossing at 248 Avenue will be improved to include an offset two-stage crossing with a pedestrian refuge island. Rapid rectangular flashing beacons will be provided in addition to roadway lighting. The impacts to the Tallgrass Greenway Trail include realigning the trail as it approaches 248 Avenue and roadside freeway grading. The project is scheduled to begin in 2026 with a construction duration approximately 12 months. As related by project engineers' coordination with the Illinois Department of Transportation, known as IDA, and the Federal Highway Association, it was determined that the impacts to the publicly-owned recreational facility, including the existing Tallgrass Greenway Trail, will require a section or F minimus documentation. This document outlines the impacts to the park district own property and then applies next steps being taken to restore the property to its original function. Per the review of the documentation provided as included in the Weekly Packet memo recently, Park District staff concurs with the determination of no adverse effects to activities, features, and attributes that qualify the resources for protection under this section 4F documentation with respect to existing park property and Tallgrass Greenway Trail. It is important to mention that approval for F documentation will not affect any future negotiation in the city of Naperville for the land rights needed for the temporary construction involving 0.09 acres or breaks down to just a little over 3,000 square feet. A park district property is expected to be utilized for reconstruction, or utilized and best separately in phase two of the project. It presented to the Park Board for review and approval when ready, somewhat to the easement area recent process would rush up hard. Property received as part of the land catch at patient order. So we have a process and model for that. So this evening, we wanted to gather your input and identify if there is a consensus for staff to submit a letter of concurrence, as they call it, which was included in the Weekly Packet, concurring that no adverse effects will occur to the Trail, Tallgrass Greenway Trail, as a result of 248 Avenue Improvements Project. Letter of concurrence is needed by the city in order to proceed with the next planning phases of the project. So we just want to open up for any discussion or if we have a senior. Good? All right. Thank you.
That's great, Parker. We need your sports complex tennis court resurfacing.
So as identified at the April 13, 2023 Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, when preparing to scope a work for the 2023 Domain for Sports Complex Tennis Sports Resurfacing Project, staff considered the approach of including pickleball courts striping and possibly converting two of the four tennis courts at this location to permanent pickleball courts based on community. There is currently striping for seven pickleball courts at this location with six that require pickleball players to bring their own nets to play and one that requires pickleball players to use the tennis court net. In addition, staff identified the Rotherland Family Pickleball Courts led to open at the Frontier Sports Complex this year. And the benefit of engaging community usage and need for pickleball courts in this area that can be viewed before proceeding with the DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Sports Resurfacing Project. In order to allow time for further evaluation and analysis on the opening of the six new dedicated pickleball courts at Frontier Sports Complex, is recommended by staff to consider resurfacing the Ashbury Park Tennis Courts looking at the other side of Oak Road this year versus in 2024 as originally scheduled for the capital plan. Essentially, what we're looking at doing here is swapping this improvement with the 2023 DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Sports Resurfacing Project. A total of $50,000 is allocated in the 2023 capital budget for the DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Courts Resurfacing Project. The same amount included in the capital plan for the 2024 Ashbury Park Tennis Courts Resurfacing Project. If there's any interest to further consider the approach of swapping the schedules of the two tennis court resurfacing projects, is recommended crack rule patch and color code the Ashbury Park Tennis Courts this summer. Work will be scheduled so as to not adversely impact already scheduled recreational programming. In addition, the crack ruling will be performed on the DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Courts this year to ensure adequate pliability until full resurfacing in 2024. So essentially, just to get us through to 2024. The estimated cost for crack ruling on the DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Courts is approximately $4,000. And we should be funded through the asset maintenance amounts portion of the 2023 capital budget for hard court maintenance. We wanted to present this information this evening and identify if there's a consensus by the Board to proceed with deferring the DuPage River Sports Complex Tennis Courts Resurfacing Project from 2023 to 2024 in order to evaluate the need for pickleball courts in the area once the six new dedicated pickleball courts come online to summer at Frontier Sports Complex and move up in schedule the 2024 Ashbury Park Tennis Courts Resurfacing Project to this year. That's, that's a lot, I know. So we, that's why we wanted to get this from the Parks and Recreation Committee, which we did in April. But essentially, what we're suggesting is deferring DuPage River Sports Complex Resurfacing and the tennis courts and then moving forward with Ashbury, moving that up in schedule from 24 to 23 to give us time to evaluate if there's truly a need for more pickleball community. We have more time to evaluate it once we see how the new six courts at Frontier are being utilized. So that's the rationale for staff to know it's a lot. So if you have any questions on this?
Clearly, pickleball does lead count. Do we know kind of how much people play tennis though? Like, is that declining at all? Is it the rise of pickleball or is it kind of the same?
Yeah.
Not from what we've seen. And I believe in Andrea, maybe you'll look at this a bit better, but I believe our tennis programs, we continue to see quite a bit of participation within the tennis areas. I know that last year, when we had, we did some resurfaces in the courts. So we had some conflicts between tennis and pickleball players. We have lines for pickleball on tennis courts. So there was certainly still quite a bit of use by tennis players.
I'd also say that I don't think you see very many of the tennis courts sitting in Illinois that they actually are being used at the same time. But it's time to provide some of the, make sure it's hard for them not to.
Jan, I appreciate the, how you're evaluating the use, but actually, we're not going to start wars between pickleball and tennis players, right? Particularly in sports and the pickleball courts.
That's why you want to take time for evaluation. And so all this does is buy us time to see how the six new dedicated courts at Frontier are being utilized, and see how pickleball is being utilized throughout the territory and then make a decision from there. The rationale as far as renovating Ashbury Park this year, since it's right across the street from Frontier, and we have striping, pickleball striping on those courts as well. So we don't see an issue at Ashbury. The start DuPage is nice to have the time to see how Frontier can utilize first. So this is just a way to do that.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the creative solution.
Thank you.
Crest Creek Basketball Park Renovation.
A contract for the Crest Creek Park Basketball Court Renovation Project is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for approval in May. The scope of work consists of removing and replacing the asphalt basketball court surface, color coating, striping, and basketball goals. Pending contract approval, the project work is slated to commence in the spring, summer of this year with a goal to reach some change in situation in fall. Just an update on that.
Director Shu, so how often do we have to resurface the basketball courts?
So usually what we found, there's seal coating, and that's usually like two to five years. And then resurfacing can be anywhere from 10 to 15 years. It all depends on the site and level of usage.
All right. Thank you, Hecker Woods. Retention base and ground.
A contract for the 2023 Hunters Woods Pond Recreation Project is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for approval in May. The scope of work for this project includes the removal of built-up sediment from the bottom of the retention pond at Hunters Woods and hauling it to the designated location at Springburg Golf Course. The existing shoreline is stable and will be maintained. The 2023 Hunters Woods Pond Recreation Project is being performed in conjunction with the shoreline stabilization improvements at Stanford Levels. Pending contract approval, work is expected to commence this spring, intent to reach completion in summer.
Thank you. Nike Sports Complex Playground Resurfacing and Resurfacing.
As relayed at the April 13, 2023 Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, while patching was being performed throughout the court in place known as PIP rubberized surface at Nike Sports Complex Playground in fall of 2022, the overall integrity of servicing came into question. As a result of further investigation, it was determined that the servicing was beyond usable life and in need of replacing. Staff discussed the findings of the investigation with the local representatives and identified the approach of replacing all the servicing at Nike Sports Complex Playground as early as this year. In preparation for the proposed replacement work, staff evaluated several options, including PIP rubber synthetic turf and engineer wood fiber, known as EWF surfacing. It's important to mention that EWF is the material utilized for smaller playgrounds at most neighborhood parks. As part of the evaluation of various products, including the review of pricing and a site tour of the turf material, it was identified that the cost of PIP rubber and synthetic turf options range from $120,000 to $170,000 for complete replacement. Staff received a cost estimate for EWF, the engineer wood fiber option, of approximately $90,000. The playground at Nike Sports Complex is slated for renovation in 2026. Reuse of a PIP rubber synthetic turf surface, which is more permanent in nature after replacement of the playground, would be impossible for these types of materials because if it's more permanent, in order to replace equipment with them, you're going to destroy the surfacing. Whereas the engineer wood fiber product allows for easy removal, replacement, or reuse at other neighborhood park playgrounds. If there was an interest, consider PIP rubber synthetic turf surfacing during the complete renovation of the Nike Sports Complex Playground in 2026. So based on the evaluation analysis, staff recommends the approach of utilizing engineer wood fiber for the Nike Sports Complex Playground Resurfacing Replacement. The funding for the project is recommended to be supported by the 2023 improvements already in process of being completed under budget and being, and by the deferred B projects within the capital budget of lower priority. This evening, we wanted to present this information and identify if there's a consensus by the Park Board to approve installing engineer wood fiber at the Nike Sports Complex Playground this year for staff representation.
I think we talked about it prior to that. I think it's a great solution. Like, we can reuse it if we need to.
Great, thank you.
Forests Park Parking Lot Renovation.
A contract for the Sportsman Park Parking Lot Renovation Project is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for approval in May. The scope of work for this project includes the removal of the existing previous concrete parking lot adjacent to the clubhouse located at Sportsman's Park and replacing it with asphalt surfacing. This new parking lot is expected to receive bio-based This new parking lot is expected to receive bio-based sealer after installation and after curing phase. Pending contract approval, work is, it's expected to commence this spring with the intent to reach completion in summer.
Sorry, Dr. Shesky, did you say it's permanent, permanent behaviors now or is it asphalt?
It's porous concrete. And it's a product that we tried years ago, and we found that it's really difficult to support the stability of the ground, it's actually turned to the ground. And so it was a great product, like we mentioned, our green team's sustainability, but we found it's just not the right application, the right site for that type of material. Where asphalt would be, that's what we're recommending, but with asphalt, we can utilize the bio-based sealer. So we still kind of follow that green initiative that we're trying to follow that.
And the contractual surfaces, I mean, last minute, for the master plan, the garden lots, those aren't looking as far back as Sportsman's Park, or will they?
Correct. This is separate based on the contractual services related to the site master plan and the permanent paper is more along West Street and, and the parking to the north and all the way down. So patrons will utilize, now that the garden lots will not part use that. This is separate, and then we also look for plumbing purposes because this facility is used on a weekly basis. That asphalt is much better than permanent papers because the garden lots will not be plowed every day and every, for every reason. So that's why we're proposing this in a way we uncoupled it from the site master plan. There's a reason for that.
Okay, so the site master plan wouldn't include this part of the lot?
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you.
In pending contractor agreement for purging construction, over thirty thousand dollars.
Good evening. As you are aware, in the summer, we simply bring to the board any independent contractor agreements that we believe will generate payments that could exceed thirty thousand. With the continued growth in demands, I have another one that we believe may exceed our threshold at some point this year. Back in the fall of twenty twenty-two and over the course of this past winter, the endorsed swim program participation levels increased and put us very close to our approval limits. In light of this, I will be bringing the agreement with Naperville Aquatics, Inc. to the next board meeting for your consideration.
Any questions?
Thank you. Got this. New business on the department updates, administration.
I have no record.
Finance.
Good evening. I got just a little bit more than Bridget. Just a little though. We're actually starting to prep some worksheets for the two thousand and twenty-four budget. About that time, we have a final audit draft where it's just done out of proof, and the same with the career plan. We can look forward to hearing about those soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple more things. A couple of things on the positive side, rounds of revenue continue to be strong at both golf courses, Naperville currently at Spring Brook. Currently, we have already passed our revenue and rounds budget for April, and our twenty twenty-three year-to-date succeeding budget also. Weather in April has been on both ends of the spectrum. We've had a beautiful week early in the month, and then the last weekend, we had snow showers and cold weather. In fact, we had a devil days Saturday where people were coming out to try out new equipment, equipment manufacturers outfitting people for new golf clubs, and it was a white-out condition. So I don't know how to figure out how they were gonna make a club fit for them, but somehow it worked out and we sold two sets of clubs. And also, our core grid has started, good lessons at both golf courses. Overall programs are still very strong. We're seeing most of our classes full, some wait lists, but we've been able to move some, switch some quick classes around to accommodate some of the kids and some of the people who are on the waitlist right now. Over at Spring Brook, the renovation work is continuing on the growing at Spring Brook Golf Course. Early this month, things were great with the warm weather, and then things kind of slowed down here with some cooler weather. So as long as we keep on seeing things like we are today, we'll be in good shape. Staff has spent over two hundred and fifty hours this month in reseeding and redoing some of the areas that slightly washed during the winter and then some of the areas that just have not come in completely. So we're expecting by middle of June, and most of those areas will be filled in. We're preparing right now for the grand opening of Spring Brook, but we're working with the marketing team on planning a kind of a celebration week. We'll have a number of events and specials that were to be planned for that week, to make a kind of a big celebration for the entire week. We'll have more details on that coming soon.
Thank you. More resources.
Good evening. As you can expect, at this time of year, we're really in the throes of recruiting and onboarding for our summer season, and that's all my thing about recruiting tonight. Want to go onto something completely different, change it up a little bit. Not sure if you're aware, but the Human Resources Department oversees district-wide training, and that includes our first aid AED CTR training. We have a variety of different positions here in the district that are required to obtain and retain that training over the course of their employment with us. And it's definitely been evaluating, just we've kind of been rapid fire of doing this training to make sure everybody has it, but the fire department, the local fire department recently reached out because they're going for a national certification to be a part safe community, and they wanted to include our data. So the set up team ran the numbers, and I was like, oh, this is something that's really cool, and I wanted to share with the board. Since January first of twenty twenty, you know, taking into consideration, we had public during this timeframe, we have trained four hundred and five individuals. So the fire department will use this data as part of their application for certification. Is that okay? Do you have any questions? All right? Thank you.
Information technology.
Good evening. A few updates for information technology tonight. Last month, I mentioned efforts that we were going through, working to build an internet for staff, the one-stop shop for access policies announcements, easy resources within the district. We launched that. But that's been launched, it's, we've already gotten some great feedback from some staff, and whenever I bring this item up, I like to throw thanks out to HR marketing as well because they did a ton of that to make this. Other things going on, we're starting to go through some process, reviewing scans, and there's the vaccine mission, working with the DURMA as partners with the DURMA in anticipation of our cybersecurity insurance renewal process. Next update, I had the opportunity to attend the Genus Illinois Annual Conference last week. This is an organization that is focused around government IT management, and we got over one hundred different government agencies from across Illinois represented. Had a chance to engage and share with them, other technology vendors, as well as state and federal security resources, including CISA, FBI, and the CSO of the state of Illinois. So we're gonna unpack a lot of what I got from that so we can make actionable. It was really great. And then a lot of the department's day-to-day efforts right now are just focused on prep for summer openings, make sure the technology is updated and ready to go, and everything starts opening up for business.
Thank you. Marketing, recommendations.
Good evening, commissioners. So I have a few quick updates for this evening. First of all, the summer program guide for twenty twenty-three went live yesterday online, and registration's going to begin on Monday, May first, so we're moving right along. Hardly believe we're almost to May. Each of you has replaced the twenty twenty-three Summer Senior Travel and also our Summer Events Congress, which will be coming to our facilities very shortly for the public. Both are great reference pieces for the upcoming season as far as the different programs and events that we have to offer the community. As Kevin had mentioned, we're gonna get ready to reopen Spring Brook Golf Course very shortly here in about six weeks, and we do have our ribbon cutting scheduled for Wednesday, June fourteenth, at four thirty PM. We're going to be hosting an concert with the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce, and we're gonna get refreshments and some contests and prizes as well, so have a little bit of fun with that. And then we also have many other ribbon cuttings coming up this season. We have a lot of playground openings and some other special facilities, so more information that could be forthcoming on those dates and times and all that pertinent information. Any questions? Thank you.
Park, please.
Good evening. As far as things on the police front, we are moving from our winter operations into our summer operations, which we need to, will still be starting at eight AM, but now we're gonna be working till midnight instead of just have one officer, we'll have two, maybe some venture four, and then until midnight as a resource for the city. Next week, we're gonna be conducting, conducting some tabletop discussions with our beach staff about critical incidents that could occur over the summer, and then I'll actually be working with beach staff and discussing protocols for active shooter technicians. So the PSOs will be joining us this month, the park service officers, so we will be training them up along with the beach staff, and fortunately, six of the eight that are returning to work with us last year, so they're gonna hit the ground running, and they'll bring the other two up to speed, and we're looking forward to a kind of seamless transition into full operations.
Parks.
Well, again, well, despite Chief Schumacher's crazy proclamation a couple weeks ago that winter was over, spring's kind of here, so that means our crews are on the north side. I've been busy working at Centennial Beach, profit for the upcoming season. Parks has completed their interior clean, interior cleaning, and trades oversaw some repairs. We're currently filling, which should take about a couple of weeks. Filling this early in the season allows for water to warm up before we open, as well as provides training opportunities for lifeguards and beach staff. Our crews have also been busy laying mulch, performing general landscaping work there within the fenced areas, and all the flowers will be installed out in the middle of May when the pressure gets arrived. Late April, early May also kicks off work, or kicks it in the high gear, the garden lots for the upcoming season. After the field is dished by the farmer, which is supposed to happen this afternoon, staff will follow up until the soil dead, which generates about a day and a half, and then we'll have a crew of about a half dozen staff members begin to lay out the grid for the plots and set the posts and flags. For other co-ops rates, staff should have things set up in just a couple of full days and be ready for the mason's work. Other general news, our subdivision hosted our first baseball tournament of the season last weekend. All three divisions are in full swing with turf work, mowing, aerating, seeding, spraying, fertilizing, and got the bunch of mulching done lately with contractual services, volunteers and in-house staff. We experienced a number of strong issues, tree-related issues, over the last few weeks with some of the storms we've had. We've been having those with in-house staff and contractual services. Don't want to steal Andrea's thunder with this one, so I'll just say that we've had a number of volunteer projects completed in the last couple of weeks and have several more scheduled for this upcoming week and weekend. And then building out a small, though not a higher end, or, you know, recruiting staff, we fill the last of our full-time positions, and we're still looking just to fill a couple of summer season, and park maintenance one and two positions.
Hold on, Dr. Shesky.
I'm sorry?
Dr. Shesky, this is more clear to me. Where did the water come from for the beach?
Um, most of it is city water, we're clean. Some have been using well water, but we know that it sometimes can stain the interior of the beach, so it is city water that we fill with.
Like, do you use regular tank and then?
It's prompted. Yeah, there's a, I think we've got three hoses generally running this time of year.
There are three hoses coming up of the hydrants that surround the beach, and I want to say it takes about six to seven days to fill, but it's all city water that comes from the machine.
I just read the one. What's happening with that one?
I have two updates for the board this evening. First one is in regards to Polo Club subdivision, a land cash agreement for the Polo Club subdivision, and the two parks proposed to be donated to the Naperville Park District when we present it to the park board at a future meeting. The neighborhood park is planned to be named Polo Club Park, and then there will be a second park with the turf multi-purpose fields is proposed. One idea that was discussed with the Parks and Recreation Committee was Fairland Farms Park. As a bit of background that we want to share with the board this evening, provided by Richard W. Coop from the community, Richard W. Coop's grandparents purchased the original Fairland Farms, which spanned the Brentwood Drive down the Green Road in the nineteen thirties, and they also purchased ninety acres between the paths of road and now, which is now on Seventy-Fifth Street before Seventy-Fifth Street was built. Richard W. Coop's parents bought the ninety acres from their grandparents, and they operated Fairland Farms Writing Stable, which served Naperville and surrounding communities for over fifty years. It continues to be a writing center today under a different ownership. Richard W. Coop, along with his parents and his brother Todd Cole. As a result, the family Todd Cole, among the other students who were, are also the three, part of three partners who currently own the Polo Club property being sold to Holti Homes. Based on this information, we wanted to identify if there's a consensus about the board to kick off a sixty-day naming review period to name the second park as part of the Polo Club subdivision, Fairland Farms Park. If there's an interest to proceed, staff can prepare a resolution to be presented in May eleventh, twenty twenty-three park board meeting as the next step in the process.
Anybody else have that?
Excellent. Next item, Naperville Comics Park, has an update for land cash contribution agreement executed in twenty twenty-one, and the municipal code Naperville County subdivision developer Holti Homes is to donate two point zero six acres of land to Naperville Park District. The donation is in neighborhood park to serve the B D residents of subdivision. The park district can hopefully arrange a temporary construction agreement in twenty twenty-two, so last year we worked through that to develop the park by its conveyance. Recently, the park district deemed the site ready for acceptance and is working with the saving Holti Homes to coordinate the conveyance process. As part of the process, the ordinance clearing necessity of use and authorizing the transfer of properties for the benefit of Naperville Park District is slated to be presented at the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three park board meetings. Just an update on that. And then lastly, Naperville Little League recently reached out to Naperville Park District about school burn replacement at Nike Sports Complex Field Tree. So yesterday, we received a letter from representatives of Naperville Little League who express an interest to remove the existing scoreboard located at Nike Sports Complex Field Tree and install a new scoreboard for the twenty twenty-three season. So in view to the agreement executed between the Naperville Park District and Naperville Little League in March of twenty twenty-two, where scoreboard installations at DuPage River Sports Complex Field Two and that park Field Six, Naperville Little League will provide all labor materials associated with the proposed over replacement. Upon completion of the project, the scoreboard should become the property of the Naperville Park District. The park district will be able to maintain the scoreboard at a level consistent with its own standards. Furthermore, the park district may use the scoreboard as a non-Naperville Little League events and programs. We wanted to share this information with the park board this evening and identify if there's a consensus from the board for staff to present an agreement similar to the twenty twenty-two agreement for Naperville Little League to install a new scoreboard at Nike Sports Complex Field Tree at the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three park board meeting, so next meeting. And Naperville Little League informed us that they're hoping, if they could, they would really love to try to install this by the end of May. So that's why we're bringing it to you tonight, because we just learned from yesterday, and since it is of essence, we wanted you to have an opportunity to be aware that this was presented to us and that there is an interest about the same model for twenty twenty-two, we can present agreement as early as the May eleventh meeting. Excellent. Thank you.
Recreation.
Well, you can certainly tell when we all look together this time of year. There's a lot of things I haven't covered, and there's a lot of stuff that's already in the talk box. First of all, as you know, it's sometimes, when it starts to be filled, it is summertime it's here. This afternoon, I look at about four feet left, so we're almost, or we'll be full here within the This afternoon, I look, we have about four feet left, so we're almost, we'll be full here within the next day or so. Which is just in time. We actually start lifeguard training this weekend. So right here, we have forty-eight new lifeguard applicants that will be going through the training along with twenty-eight returning guards. So we're in really good shape there. Beach membership sales are on par with last year at the same time with about nine hundred and sixty-six memberships being sold already. Registration for summer takes place this upcoming Monday, May first. And in light of that, staff are busy getting ready for the summer session. Many of our positions are close to being built, which is amazing. We're really getting close there. We don't have very many left, so we're excited about that. However, we do still have a few concessions, day camp, swim lesson instructors, and childcare. So if anyone wants to move away. As our demands for our programs continue to grow, it is keeping our customer service staff very busy. Not only with registration, but also booking and park rentals. For the, from now until the end of August, we are approximately eighty-five percent booked on weekends at our major park facilities. And we continue to see more rentals coming through weekdays as well. On the volunteer front, Tim mentioned that we work really closely this summer. We have eighteen large groups that will be volunteering out in our parks over the next, through April and May. So that's a huge jump from last year, so I'm really excited about that. And they're helping in many ways with mulching, all sorts of different projects. We also have three eco-scout projects that are underway. One of them is at the golf course and one in the South Parks Division and also in our IP gardens at the garden plots. And last but not least, I dropped at the Parks and Recreation Meeting last week at Fort Hill. We are at the most paid memberships that we've ever had. And last, last week, I said we were at three thousand six hundred and ninety-three. We are at three thousand seven hundred and four. So it continues to grow. So, any questions?
Thank you. Next up, we have recognition of our. I'd like to invite Executive Dr. Wilson in to the main room. Will you join me?
First of all, congratulations to Mr. Mike Room on your election of Naperville City Council. As you assume your duties next week, we realize it's time to ask board meeting as a Park Board Commissioner. So we want to take this opportunity to thank you and recognize you for your four years of service to Naperville Park District and our community. When you began your term as Park Commissioner in twenty nineteen, through your personal experiences, you brought an appreciation of what our district offers the community, including our wide-ranging programs, beautiful parks, and ability to bring families together through common interests. We thank you for your work over the past four years, applying your financial expertise, business experience, and community involvement to your work with Park District. Your involvement helped ensure continued good stewardship of our community's resources. You also were intricately involved in continuing to expand our recreational facilities in Naperville, like constructing and subsequent opening of Bull's Crossing Community Park, among many other projects. On behalf of the Park Board and Naperville Park District staff, thank you for supporting our mission to provide recreation and park experiences to promote healthy lives, healthy minds, and healthy community. And we acknowledge your service and credit to the community and to the community. I'm pleased to cite you for this token of appreciation. And a beautiful picture.
There's a lot.
The next regular meeting of the Naperville Park District Board Commissioners will be May eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven PM at Fort Hill.
Move to adjourn the April seventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting at seven twenty-five PM.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.